Breathen. When I'm on this. Welcome to the City of Oxford, Commission's Board meeting is seven P M. on Tuesday, February thirteenth. Please be reminded to turn all your cell phones off. I didn't mention. I'd like to ask Reverend Grant Arduo of Oxford Baptist Church to do some prayer following the page of the leaders.
We need our God in prayer with me. God of creation, we pray that you would be present with us in spirit now, for if you are with us, then nothing else matters. And Lord, if you are not with us, then nothing else matters. And we respond this evening to your great faithfulness, God of love and life by asking for simplicity of heart. Help us not to be overwhelmed, not to be overcome by the complexities of serving this community. But give a simpleness of faith, clarity of mind, and singleness of heart. That in simpleness, we may aspire not to be great, but to be good. And may our loves mirror those of our Lord, Jesus Christ, love of God and love of neighbor. Amen.
Reverend, let your leaders find. You can stand on the face of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you Reverend Pope for which his hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This honor will consider adjustment to and approval of its license general. What line is headed? Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
The motion. In order to provide the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance. The Board of Commissioners have approved the Code of Ethics, established back on its practical ethical standards for board members and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, board members should afford in private an exercise of their official duties. And should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. If any board member knows of a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict, please state so at this time. Thank you. No comments. We move to public comment, public comment, we have two speakers today. I'd like to call upon Mr. Jeremy Best to twelve A Grand Street, Oxford.
My concern is, um, I live on Grand Street and, um, we need more, um, community, like more, um, police officers to control our area. Because that's the biggest problem. So that's my concern.
I must say the police department is doing a good job in trying to keep everything on the order. We understand, we accept your coming, it's, it's, it's very good for citizens to come up here and express yourself, especially concerns about. Quite sure if you need to, were you getting any further, I'm quite sure Chief Ford will assist you if you need to, at any time. Thank you. Another question. This one. I would, I'd like you to comment a little bit about what's happening that you have some concerns about. I mean, you know, because almost every street, there's probably something to be said, but do you have any specifics about what's going on?
Yes, um, it's a big open field, you know, out across in front of my house, and there's people that hang down in there. And they're kind of, they're growing in that area and, you know, I am concerned about it. And the store across the road in front of me, you know, got robbed and, you know, they let people hang out in front of that parking lot all day long. Still growing, you know, and it's not okay.
And these are folks that all live in that area?
No.
Thank you. I think this is one of these locations that been looking towards, uh, the game rooms and I've heard a crowd out there, so. Question. Also, I've, I've also had, um, the other local business owners close, close to that gas station also expressed their concerns of the people hanging in and out of that store and all the activities that's going on does not need to address by the owners. I would definitely, um, get with the chief and, um, and even the sheriff, because I would like to maybe put the, um, see, maybe we can work together to put together some kind of task force. Maybe some kind of, um, drug and, um, gang task force. There are a lot of activity that's going on, there's a lot of gang activity that's happening in that area. And so we need, we definitely need to address it before it, it becomes an infection.
I'd like to speak over, and I agree with you, Commissioner Bales, but again, I've spoken with, uh, chief, we had an initial meeting, phenomenal, initial meeting, and, um, definitely first and foremost, I applaud for the service that is being provided. Um, I can assure you, um, citizens, um, as being the chair of the public safety, uh, that is something that's, you know, that will be considered. We have been considering for a while. Um, again, we, we understand what we are faced with, with, uh, another office has been being short right now. I'm quite sure we're working on things to improve that. Um, so not only in, in, in Grand Street, thank you for your concern, but the intent, um, of the department and I, I'm quite sure, um, Sheriff Fowden today and Chief Ford will say the same thing, I can sense it. Our plan is to have Oxford safe, that, all of Oxford safe. Um, not to the little, but again, that's the intent. And, uh, again, as I said, as we, uh, continue to, uh, move forward, um, I, I said definitely we'll continue, uh, meetings, you know, with the chief and, um, Sheriff Fowden tomorrow. But again, the goal is to make Oxford as safe as possible. So rest assured, um, you know, that, that is being looked at and being considered. Um, of course, you can't, you know, spend a whole, a whole hand, you know, but, um, trust me, anything we have to, and everything we have to make Oxford safe, that is not within our intention.
I'd like to call Mrs. Lori Dutra. One on one turn you can drive Oxford.
Good evening there, there's members of the board. My name's Lori Dutra, and I live at one on one track to drive in this great city, and I've been here, um, working on Main Street for thirty-three years. And, um, my husband and I are the owners of the Farmer Artists Restaurant just up the street. And it's my pleasure to be here with y'all. Um, once again, I'm here back downtown, and the purpose of my comments tonight are to invite you and possibly be introducing you to the North Carolina Main Street Conference, which will be held this year in Goldsboro, March twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. Um, there's simply no better way to meet the officials, the staff, movers and shakers of downtowns from cities and towns all across North Carolina. Um, and Commissioner Khan, as your board liaison to downtown, can give you more information about the event. Last year, it was in Statesville, and Oxford was honored for its twenty-five years in the Main Street program. We have been, we've been one of the core towns in this program. And this year, in Goldsboro, we'll be honoring Rosalind Green as a Main Street champion. And of course, if you all, you almost know her, she is a vital part of our city. And I just want to say that I don't need to tell you guys the remarkable things that our city has been doing downtown. And I don't need to tell you guys how important it is to continue the resilience we have in the past, um, three or four years as a place to gather neighbors, a place for diversity, a place for business interests, and a community of residents. And we hope to expand that into more neighbors and more gathering. Um, so don't miss this opportunity. It's a really a conference where you can learn innovative design, you can learn economic strategy from people who have made it work, just like us. So you can register for as little into the conference as you want, or all three days, but please try to come Thursday morning. Honor Rosalind Green, let's have an Oxford presence there, and I do invite y'all. Thank you very much.
Miss Dutra, what were those dates again?
March twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. The fourteenth is the end of the conference, the last thing they do is the champions, um, meeting, and that would be at eleven o'clock Thursday morning. But I know about six years ago, it was in Goldsboro, we traveled down, some commissioners and other folks in town traveled down in the morning. You can get there in under two hours, and did a little bit of stuff, and then went to the, the, but every year, Oxford's been honored either by winning a business, um, recognition, Burry forced, um, one one year, Thorpean won one year, Big Blue won one year. Um, um, this year, he doesn't, one on one, Tab was our champion one year, and this year, we should turn out. So thank you very much, hope to see you there.
Thank you very much, I have myself planned, um, agenda. I see the clerks just taking care of that issue. I'm quite sure another member of the board when you sit in that room, it's a very good thing for us to tend to represent the city of Oxford. I do want to say that our Commissioner John Toby, I did ask in the agenda meeting that we keep him on the prayer. John is going to some commissions, and like you said, please keep in your prayers. Commissioner Khan is off, he's, I had received truck, he had built for the company he works for, so he's not here tonight. City of Oxford, our proclamation recognizes Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is a celebration of contribution and achievement of African Americans and their descendants, and was established in nineteen seventy-six by Carter Wilson. And whereas this year, the team is African Americans and the arts. The words in the field of visual and performing arts, literature, literature, fashion, culture, language, film, music, architecture, cumulory and other forms of cultural expression, the African American influence has been paramount. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of Black leaders in our lives and the contribution made by these dedicated individuals in helping to bring the light all the aspects of Black heritage that have shaped us as a united people. Whereas this was made possible by leaders and advocates during the civil rights movement. And whereas special recognition from front of our local activists is in order this month. And whereas Dr. Ben Chase, who was born in Oxford, North Carolina, lifelong activist, civil rights leader, Dr. Chase both came to racial injustice and wrongful imprisonment to become a vocal leader in civil rights movement, movement which pressed for equal equality between the races. And whereas other local civil rights leaders and activists include Reverend Bernard Tyson, Eddie McCoy, and Reverend Harrison Simons, to name a few. And now therefore, I give Reverend Nurse Mary of City of Oxford, North Carolina, Reverend Lou Hervey proclaiming February twenty-fourth as National Black History Month, and call upon the people of Oxford to join their fellow citizens across North Carolina in the United States in recognizing and participating in this special service. In witness error, I appear on set my hand and call the seal of the City of Oxford, North Carolina, to be affixed this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four. Just so you can celebrate the national sort of recognition of our engineering. Oh, let's go on. Our city engineer. Amy. This time. I know the term can say across the center. Our proclamation recognizes Engineering Week. Whereas Engineering Week is February eighteen to eight, February twenty-fourth. And whereas this year's team is welcome to the future. And whereas Engineers Week was founded by the National Society of Professional Engineers in nineteen fifty-one. Whereas engineering is involved in all aspects of our daily life, included but not limited to building, construction, installation, of water and sewer instru- infrastructure, network roads and bridges, along with other mechanical and civil engineering. And whereas this week is dedicated to ensuring a diverse and well-educated future engineering workforce by increasing understanding and of, and interest in engineering and technology careers, and celebrates how much of a difference engineers make in our world. And whereas we celebrate the city, city own Amy Redpath for improvements for streets, award and sewer infrastructure, and to waste water treatment plant. Now therefore, I give Reverend Nurse, Mayor of Oxford, along with the board commissioners, whoever, whoever proclaim February eighteen to the February twenty-fourth, Engineers Week for City of Oxford. And with the error, I, I want to set my hand and call the seal of Oxford, North Carolina, to be affixed this thirteenth day of February twenty twenty-four. I want to say that I met Amy, took a while to meet her, I think she's a lawyer, like a couple of engineers I know near Larry Thomas. But when I walked into her office, and I saw displayed upon the water lines that was replaced, I asked for a physician. And it's scary for someone, if you don't know about water treatment and work with lawyers and all this stuff, you will not understand what you're seeing. If you're saying you're passing some law, that's what I've been having all my life. Amy has done a good job. It took me for a while, like I said, once you get inside, now you see what's going on. And she does a good job, and she's hard worker. We all know that, and we all see that. I know in the past, I heard Commissioner Bridges thoughts how well about infrastructure work plan that we have. And I really want to give Amy a, a hand of applause for everything she's doing for the city.
I just appreciate the opportunity to do all the work we are accomplishing here in Oxford, and I appreciate the board's support in doing that.
Thank you. Public care is in the city business, citizens know this, they probably hear it at this time. Citizens will not need to sign up to speak of public care, run recognize out of there. Come forward to the podium, state your name, address, and your area, suit of residence. I am four point one. Just want to get started, uh, we, uh. Okay, I want to just real quick, I know last meeting, I had a lot of comments about not having a paper agenda. We are moving into a modern world where we do it on screen. Unfortunately, right now, our, our system is not working well with the, it's the trace night to put the information. And we're doing our best to try to keep here one informant and, as we go along. Thank you for that, and hopefully we'll work on this and get this done. In the future, we'll be able to totally put everything on the visual screen up there for you. Four point one, all public careers receive citizen input on annexation requests for cruise bond consisting of fifty-two acres. Four point two. At this time, I'd like to open the public care. Would anybody like to speak? On this side. Cruise bond consisting of fifty-two acres. And one over here, right, sir? Well.
Just, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And just, uh, some of the folks down on Grand Street.
No, Mister, Mister. We have thirty followers that are probably.
Oh, is that?
Comment section, we're not probably here.
Oh, it's probably, okay, okay.
And all the comments is where anyone addressed, and I can tell you, uh, hearing agenda. Consider approving an annexation request for pawned crew consisting of fifty-two acres. Staff recommends annexation. My staff, I love my staff, you know, my fellow commissioners, they're trying to keep this rookie online, so. Public hearing is, uh, is closing this time. Uh, four point one. Thank you very much, they keep me in track, you see women too. And consider, consider approving the annexation request for cruise bond consisting of fifty-two acres. Staff recommends approving the annexation for cruise bond. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Motion stands. Outpost? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider calling for public care for the March twelve board meeting regarding a non-contiguous annexation of thirty-one twenty-nine Montague Central Road consisting of one hundred and thirty-four plus acres. Motion. No, it's motion, second. Any discussion?
Uh, I do have a question. Um, and I guess this may be to the manager. I know that we have, um, have had some discussions relative to our water and sewage capacity. And I guess, um, my question is, does these two annexations have an effect on our, our, the issue of capacity, you know, water and sewage?
They can use water into a pool, so.
All right.
Any other discussion? No.
Listen, man. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I know this is not public comments, but it's. I'm sorry, Chief, I'm happy to step on the stove. Um, is this the annexation of the park road? That hundred, some, one hundred thirty-some acres up that way?
One hundred thirty-four acres, uh. No, it's not triangle.
It's not triangle. Okay, because my concern is, if, you know, Chief and I both have decided to serve any annexation to grow, the infrastructure concern has to be the law force and capacity as well, so I'm just trying to catch up with you guys as far as the city is doing and how emergency and county to serve this community, and the law force and capacity. And like Mr. Bridges was saying, you know, water, sewer, infrastructure has to be a part of the conversation. So that's, that's why I was, I knew, we were going to go on with the annexation of Triangle. I didn't know when that was going to come up, so, okay, thank you.
Did we make two discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. I am four point four, consider acceptance of efficiency statement for annexation of thirty-one twenty-nine Montague Central Road. Staff recommends acceptance of efficiency statement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider calling for public hearing for the March twelve, twenty twenty-four board meeting to receive citizen input for amendment section fifteen point six point three of the unified development coordinates. Staff recommends calling for public hearing to be held in March twelve, twenty twenty-four. It will be changed to U V O here to one, three, two, four, just correcting. Will there be a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion carries. Item four point six, consider calling for public hearing regarding a text amendment for three point five point two for bar tavern in the C D B district. March twelve, twenty twenty-four, regular board meeting. This amendment is needed to include standards for bars in the central downtown case two district, C B D district. Staff recommends calling for public hearing. Is there a motion? Motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I, I, I simply say that we, I would like some kind of research or a presentation about why we had the rule that an establishment like that reached to be at least, you know, was it five hundred? You have to five hundred foot rule because I don't know what effect, you know, if I were a resident that, that an establishment like, establishment like this was less than five hundred feet. I just like to know a little bit more about the reason for the rules in the first place. And if we change it, um, how far would it go, you know, in terms of future establishment? You know, if we say a hundred feet, does that mean another business says, well, how about fifty feet? Um, so, so I, I would like to just know a little bit more about the purpose. Because, you know, no ways, um, and I know that this particular gentleman wants to have pool table, games and things like that. And, um, I don't know if I wanna, um, I don't know if I'm in a position to know how I would vote unless I learn a little bit more about the reasoning behind that, that distance rule.
I did send Andy a plan board meeting and Mrs. Hartill, some explanation on it, we'll hear the question.
So yes, sir, um, if we call for the public hearing, I'll do some research and provide the presentation.
Any more? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Four point seven, considering appointment for the planning board to fill the vacancies left by myself. It's a board decision, we have to vote on this, uh.
Do we have candidates?
We don't have candidates.
We have this candidate.
Okay.
Right, are they?
Okay.
Why would I wait? Does anybody else have a top? Have a problem?
I think I'm pretty sure listening back to that.
Okay.
Sure, David, and our Dr. Don, Don, and who? Terrell and. Terrell and. And if you all have difficulty pulling that information up, if you want to hold it up, you guys can leave.
Okay. And I, I read that, um, both articles, but they're not really nice, um.
I'd like to get a hard copy. Okay.
I don't think I actually want that. Okay.
So I want to take a look at this. Like, can we, um, can we possibly, um, Michelle, can you possibly request both candidates to be at the next meeting to maybe, um, maybe address the board and, you know, um.
It's definitely gonna be the standard for all advisor boards and new directors and president. But I don't want to treat my advisor board differently than any other advisor.
Okay, listen. Uh, I, I did bring that question on, sorry, the answer is correct. If we do one more, we gotta do every little, if we have more candidates to be here on.
Yeah.
So I, uh, think we.
I certainly appreciate the, um, Commissioner Bellas', um, concern because we do want to make sure that whoever we select are qualified and, and, and and, and that's why I need to see a hard copy of the applicants. Cause I, I, I cannot find anything that much.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until the next month so that we can work out how technical issues can get automated.
Oh, second. Who's the second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four point eight. Four point eight, consider approving the budget amendment to appropriate revenue amount of one hundred thousand to purchase water meters. Staff recommend improvement adjustment to the budget for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Now, a motion? Motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion, I'm sorry? Any opposed?
You know, I, I do have a question because I'm looking at certain taxes and, um, and I see water tax. And, uh, hundred thousand. And then I see water meter, a hundred thousand, so. My.
Both two.
They're, they're for meters. Okay, so there's nothing, nothing about water.
All others? And that's the new name on meters that we read every, you know, they drop it right there.
So we just, we're approving a hundred thousand, only.
You don't play right now? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four point nine, consider adopting a revised capital project ordinance to revise, revise resolution and revise budget amendment so H G Reynolds can finish the entire twenty eighteen sewer line improvement project. Now, a motion?
Hold on one minute, Commissioner Bridges. He always see me acting strange. I'm not tech experienced and I'm a grandma and we get frustrated quick. And you know, my computer, I'm not being buddies.
You want Commissioner Bellas to talk about this?
Hold on, I'm trying to, here we go, Commissioner Bridges, I'm mad. So I was trying to pull it up. There we go.
You got it?
Uh huh.
Any motion? Do we read those sentences? Do we read the whole item?
No, the staff report is one of the attachments because it's so long, it's like a whole tape.
Remember. Yeah. The emphasis on the whole, slow for, for us. A little motion, a little motion. Motion, I ask Commissioner Bellas? Second. Second. Commissioner Grant, any discussion? Any discussion? Senator Manager, we would like to address this, I'll ask, uh, I can just give a brief overview of what considers.
With the, with the twenty eighteen private network call, we had some material cost increases around the project that we're agreeing to at the beginning. We also added some small items that we felt would be better served to now on Hill Street. We also had some challenges with some of the work, um, doing for railroad. And we're working with the engineering firm and the contractors to value engineer some of the, uh, work that we are doing out there. They think that the price will actually come in under this amount, but we did not want to have to come back to the board a second time.
Any more discussion? We did. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consider accepting the December twenty twenty-three financial report on January second and January ninth minutes. Accept the December twenty twenty-three financial report. Approve the following twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. January second and January ninth, January ninth, regreving. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to ask board members, uh, starting with Commissioner Bellas, C P M, and Comms. I just want to thank the community members for coming out and making questions that concerns the night. And congratulations to Amy as well. Probably. Commissioner Bellas?
Um, not much, just, you know, I always want to thank city staff for everything that you do. Congratulations to Amy as well. She does a lot for the city. Yeah, before I was on the board, you really don't think about some of those things that, you know, she does on a daily basis. It's really impressive. She's a big asset to the city, so I just want to say that. Uh, I know I mentioned this during the, were you gonna, did you want to talk about the brand? I don't want to steal it again.
I'll let you have it tonight.
Um, so as far as, uh, uh, at first, I want to thank everybody, um, that participated in the, uh, City Mind for Andy initiative. We had some really good meetings and, um, you know, public meetings, there were three, that were well attended. Um, we got some really good feedback from, from all of the ci, all citizens. And thanks to anybody that took the survey online, that was very helpful. We got, um, it was two hundred fifty-three people completed the survey, um, you know, the company that, that we, that we have been working with, they said that that was just a fantastic response for, um, a city the size of Oxford. So they had a lot to work with, um, in coming up with the branding scheme. And, you know, the whole purpose of it was to see, you know, what the community and the citizens of Oxford wanted to see in their branding and, um, they got a lot, a lot of feedback to, to do that. So that was, that was very, um, and so the project's ongoing, um, we're back to the drawing board on some of the stuff, on some of the, the logos and stuff. We've, we've had a lot of meetings about it, some of the live visits and to look more than I ever would imagine, um. So hopefully sometime in the near future, um, you know, that, that branding will be on display.
Commissioner Grant?
Yes, sir. Uh, Amy, congratulations, thank you so much for what you do. A lot of times those jobs that, um, made you go unnoticed, we have understood, honorable value. So thank you for your, uh, your time and commitment and what you do in, uh, out of the city of Oxford, it's great, we appreciate it. Um, again, a thousand thanks, uh, thank yous for what you do. Uh, thank you for, um, everyone that, um, had concerns. Uh, on this evening, um, we would encourage you to continue to do so. You know, I, I, I've often said we have great representation, um, of you all. Sure votes are gathered here, so, um, we are committed to, um, you know, fulfilling our obligations. But it's, it's better known when you guys have the opportunity to express those concerns. Pretty much it is a guideline for us to, um, do what we have to do, we're supposed to do. So I would ask to continue, uh, to come to meetings, continue to invite, uh, folks to come in. Cause again, you know, our, our goal and our aim is to do what's best for the city of Oxford and to tell us to everyone. So, um, and what better way to do that we have out there for, and their concerns are needed to be expressed. So again, thank you, um, for our, um, city employees that are here, thank you so much for what you do, for your tireless hours, for what you do. Um, again, a lot of times it may, you may think it go unnoticed, but it's not. You know, we're greatly appreciative, um, and I speak, you know, definitely as well, uh, to be directly appreciable what you do. Um, so again, thank you all. Again, just continue to, um, come here, I understand, like I said, last month with the opportunity, but, um, but again, just continue to play with those concerns. So kind of know our actions and we want to be all for it, thank you again so much.
Mayor, what's that?
You all know that I am a reading book with Oxford, so I've got an invitation to the mayor, to the entire board of West Oxford Elementary School. West Oxford Elementary School will be celebrating Reading Across America Day honoring Dr. Seuss on Monday, March fourth. We would be delighted if you would join us as a guest reader commemorating Dr. Seuss' birthday and paying tribute to many characters that come alive in. and paying tribute to many characters that come alive in Dr. Seuss' books. The following times are available, the times are from nine thirty AM to one fifteen AM. You can call, um, Kathy Carroll, nine one nine six nine three, nine one six one to let her know if you're available and the time on that date that you are available. And I can tell you that I get more from reading with these young people than they get from me. There is a need and it delights them to know our positions and what we do and for wanting to say, who are you? When you say Mayor Procton, they wanna know what that is, so if you have the time, please come out and join them. I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the Boys and Girls Club Gala. This has arrived, it was fun. Thank you. P.S. City staff know how I feel about you, each and every one of you. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Procton. Commissioner Bridges?
Yeah, I think what we need to keep in mind, you know, we're certainly congratulating, um, the things that Amy has done for the city. Um, and there probably a number of other employees who could probably, um, um, are deserved of, um, congratulations on the work that they do for the city. One of the things that Amy has done since I've been on the board is gotten the city millions of dollars. You know what I mean? In grants and, and just other things that, you know, we sometimes take for granted, cause I remember when we were here at the local water, uh, bill. You know, there was, there was some concerns in the city about, um, the increase in, in, in water costs. However, um, it, those steps that we took made us eligible for millions of dollars in grants. And so a lot of the infrastructure work that has been done, and that is replacement of old pipes. And, uh, and we've seen pictures of some, some of the pipes that, that used to be here in the city. Some of them made of clay, um, cardboard. And, 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 and so the, the changes that we have made are gonna be very useful to future generations. You know, I, I, I look at my grandbaby and I think about how she will benefit by some of the things I'm doing now. Hopefully she'll stay in this area, stay in Grandmont County, but, you know, I know that the things we are doing are, are for future generations. And then, uh, Commissioner Fields, as well as some other commissioners, I can't remember who, have talked about West Oxford and, and, and the importance of us pouring into the lives of those young people at our elementary schools. Well, you know, I actually walked my grandbaby to, to school in the morning and Miss Bonneville, the principal over there, uh, said that you would like, um, you know, me to come and speak for Black History Month. And, and, and I think it's, uh, one of the, it's great that you acknowledge that, uh, manner of, in, in the proclamation that you did, um, for Black History Month. And, and I said, well, who do you want me to talk about? Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, uh, Harriet Tubman? You know, who, who is it that you like me to talk about? And Miss Bonneville, Mr. Bean said, I want you to talk about you. What you talk about, and, and see, there are so many leaders in this community. If you talk about what you've done in life, believe it or not, that could have a tremendous effect on young people. And, um, so I'm looking forward to that opportunity, um, so I, I, I'm not a reading buddy. Because, you know, but, but I am gonna go back to school and, and, and talk about some of the things that we do here at the city.
It was wonderful. City manager? Your turn.
Yes, sir.
City manager?
Tomorrow, if anyone wants to come out. We will have three groups of fifth graders coming in for a tour of the city hall. And so if any of you guys wanna come and speak, then I'll shoot you.
Okay.
It'll be three different groups, the tour of the courthouse, the museum, and so, that's gonna be fun.
Can we, can we say that?
I would, I would. I would also like to add that Mr. Told me is also a reading buddy.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, yes.
It's my turn. I, I, education is one of the key factors to create a good society. Uh, as I said before, I visited the crazy pool I was just last week temporarily with, uh, Commissioner Bellis in West Oxford. So I was asked to come back again, uh, and when you sit with the young ones, you feel it, cause they, they look up, believe you, show. And seeing us there, you know, like Commissioner Bridges said, he's gonna speak for Black History. When you go to school with these kids, you don't see any, any racial, racial divide. These kids are all together, so it's, it's a wonderful experience to do it. I, I also wanna, you know, I'll tell Amy, and there's some people we take for granted that they work twenty-four hours a day, which is the police chief and the fire chief. We take it for granted. Yeah, they work twenty-four hours a day, they sign up for it. Uh, but when you see the staff, you see the amount of work that our engineer does. You see the amount of work of our planning director does. And I know everybody will stay sick, but it's a job they do. I, I say to these ladies, how many hours you work a day? Who can say that? Fourteen, sixteen hours, I, I believe. So I know we will ready to take care of that issue, you ladies and, and, and for all the departments. And, and I wanna comment, one other thing I said in the agenda for me, ownership. I, 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 I'd like to hand it to my city manager. This man had to get down on the streets from Howard and pick up trash. If you go down industry drive from Madison to Rana Street, I hope they pick them up ready. Here's black trash bags lining the street for the job this man has done. And that's ownership. Frank, Mr. Taylor, I really appreciate that, that, that really, that's the point that I told myself I go pick up with you too. Uh, and I think we should all join in and do our effort. And, and last thing I wanna talk about is the, today we attended a community workforce dealing in homeless and drug, drug addiction items. And we were sort of called out as a city commissioners, we need to get involved. And Chief Ford was there, and, and there's something very important. During, I, I, I learned and like picked up from Chief Ford and the fire chief and sheriff during the weather was real cold. And I started going out and driving around, like, to see who I could find. Till I found somebody here about four o'clock one day, was freezing and nowhere to go, so I had to call the chief and the fire chief and they took them and took care of it. Homeless is a situation that comes from a mental issue, a lot of issue, you have families that are homeless. And we are working to help, you see, and we need to come together as a city. Not just task forces, we need to. I asked my board members, please join me, I will invite everyone to next meeting we have sometime next month. And Chief Ford to tell you, that's hard work. I know the city manager, it's all that, that's a lot of work, it's a responsibility, it's not our police and fire chief's responsibility, but they take it on. And we don't have a center in Oxford. And handle those situations. Economy has, but they operate in different cities and different places. So we need to figure out how we can work as one and participate and help that, I think we obligated to it. So this task force is going up there, here's a certain grants that's being, that we can pick up and, and work this, so, uh, please, I'm asking. My board members, I'm not quite sure we all work together, we step up and then, and if you're in the community, you wanna join this team and work with this, you chat to me. You know what I mean? Yeah. Okay, I think this is the conclusion. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?